You made me pay that to cut down one tree.
You ready? Amy, we're live. Very good. Welcome. This is the city council meeting at 6:00 PM Tuesday, March 22nd. Introduce the meeting and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Please join me if you are able for invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Father, we thank you for the day and the beautiful weather. Thank you for the place we get to live and work and play and call home and help us to be good stewards of what you've given to us in our time and our talents and our efforts. Help us to make decisions for the greater good and not for our own personal issues. Thank you for all you do for us in your name I pray. Amen.
The United States of America, to the mother of which stands one nation on our honor, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Nicole, roll call please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bogosian.
Here.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Popsin.
Here.
Councilmember Streetman.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
If you have a form.
Thank you. First item is citizens comments. Our first speaker is William Hamilton, which is not here yet. From Nicole, this is the next Patsy Hindman. And again, if you'll state your name and city or address if you want, and our time limit is three minutes.
Okay, I'll do my best. There's a lot of concerns, so three minutes is going to be tough. I'm Patsy Hindman, 7 Barnacle Row. Some of you probably know me from Facebook. I try to be polite when I am criticizing. There's a lot of changes that you all are proposing in short order. It almost feels like you're trying to railroad them through with very little opportunity for citizens to get involved and that you know how we feel. Last time you talked about changing the way that we determine election results. And I think you, Mayor, and also Reste said that you think it's confusing to the residents to have a runoff. Confusing. I'm insulted. I don't know how many people are confused by runoff election, but I'm certainly not one of them. You also cited the fact that in a runoff, sometimes it's a hardship if somebody's out of town or in the military. They figured out how to vote the first time, and they will do their best to figure it out again. But you want to then not allow other people who are here to be able to vote that second time around. And I think that's very unfair. It's kind of like disenfranchisement. You said that the number of people voting in a runoff election is usually small. But when do you use the number of people that you think will vote in an election to decide whether or not to have that election? And then sometimes you said, we need to find out what they do in Mount Pleasant and other jurisdictions. You all were elected to the people of Isle of Palms. I don't care what they do elsewhere. You should be concerned about what we're doing right now. For a referendum. Mr. Mayor, I think you said, oh, we don't have to do that. You probably don't have to do it. But why wouldn't you want to do it unless you're afraid that it might not pass? If it didn't pass, it's something that you shouldn't be doing. That brings me to, that was all I was going to talk about until I saw what's on the agenda for this time with your proposed changes away from committees and towards workshops. One of the things that you said was that you have to address the potential concern that reducing the number of meetings would mean reducing the opportunity for public to provide input and engagement. Potential concern, it's a very real concern, not a potential concern. You are encouraging us to send written comments by email. You wouldn't even have an opportunity to speak before your workshops. Well, I sent all of you an email about my election concerns, and only two of you even acknowledged that you received it. Maybe you didn't see it. Maybe you chose to ignore it. That's not my idea of good communication. You also cited that there were 140 meetings last month, or last year, I guess. And when I think about it, there's seven committees, I think six committees plus council. So that should be seven meetings a month, which would be 84 a year, not 140. So the rest of those must have been special needs that arose. So you had to call a meeting. That could still arise with your workshops and all. If you have special needs, I would hope you would call some sort of a special meeting. You also say these workshops will be for blue sky things. I think it's nice that you're going to look into the blue sky and see what's coming on. But there are very real day-to-day considerations that need to be taken up. And again, you keep saying the best way for people to get in touch with you is by email. But you don't respond to the emails. So we don't even know if you got them. I don't understand that at all. And you want to temporarily suspend the ordinance so that you can try out this whole workshop plan. It's too easy to temporarily suspend an ordinance. I think you should think about it longer and give people more opportunity to get engaged. And finally, from your own priorities and goals that you introduced in January, three things that stuck out to me. You want to increase trust levels. When it looks like you're trying to railroad these things through, that's not a way to engender trust. You want to improve resident satisfaction with city communications. You don't do that by not responding to emails. And you want to increase citizen engagement. You don't do that by limiting the number of opportunities for us to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Kathy Campbell.
Kathy Campbell, I live on 20th Avenue. Mayor Pounds, council. Tonight, I just want to ask all of you a very simple question. Are we on the same side? Do you want, as I do, what's best for residents, tourists, and businesses on our beautiful island? I'd really like to think so. I felt sure that Mr. Streetman was on this side when we had a great conversation over a month ago where he assured me that regarding a task force to determine how best to spend ATAX money, which amounts to about $1 million a year, all of the heavy lifting had already been done, and this process would be done quickly and not drug out. Assuming you all are on this same side, I'm confused by a few things. The task force meeting originally scheduled for March 10th was rescheduled to March 17th. I'm told because Helen Hill of the CVB was unavailable to attend and present again. I would have thought an organization having about 100 employees of whom our ATAX money helps pay their salaries of approximately $5.4 million annually, according to their 2018 tax returns, would have another person available to present on March 10th as scheduled. Instead, the meeting was rescheduled to March 17th, a date that Ray Burns, one of the most informed members of the task force, as he is also the chair of the ATAX Committee, which has already done the heavy lifting, could not attend. I'm pretty sure Mr. Burns would have had some good questions for Helen Hill after she said that he was disingenuous and untruthful, had he been in attendance and given this opportunity. I also heard Ms. Limbaugh asked for a presentation by the ATAX Committee regarding their findings, and she was told that Ray Burns could do that. I look forward to that presentation, and I think it will benefit the task force immensely, as will the presentation by Folly Beach DMO. I'd like to think that the CVB is being transparent about its income expenditures so that the task force can determine if it is good use of IOP funds. There is no way to judge whether IOP should continue to give them our money until we see how they have spent our money. Documentation of financials should be provided and explained to the task force. Doug Tresslow is in possession of these and happy to present should they ask. I'd like to think that Mr. Streetman being on the Board of Governors for the Charleston Visitors Bureau is not a conflict of interest. I'd like to think that the task force has plans to address short-term rental property owners' concerns and ideas regarding how to spend this money, as they're the ones who earn IOP more than 80% of these funds. I believe there are two members on the task force who own short-term property rentals on IOP. I ask you to set up a method for other short-term property owners to contact them. I'd like to think that this task force will not be waiting for an opinion from the Attorney General to make a recommendation. There's no telling how long it might take while IOP continues to turn over $3,000 daily to CVB. Currently, there is no law that states that a DMO must show it has an ongoing campaign in order to be chosen. I'd like to think that Mayor Pounds has canceled the ATAX meeting for February and again for March for a valid reason. But I'm not sure why they aren't meeting to set up recommendations on the expenditure of revenue generated from the accommodations tax, as stated in section 6425 of South Carolina Code of Laws. After the ATAX Committee presented to council last fall and was told that this was the most thorough report ever presented, the decision was made to defer this issue to the new council now sitting right here. I'd like to think we are all on the same side. Thank you.
William Hamilton, last person signed up speaker. All right, thank you all. Next item is consent agenda. Just to prelude to this, and I think just for our new members and maybe our existing members, because we haven't been doing the consent agenda for too long, anyone can have any item pulled out of the consent agenda you want to have further conversation on. So we'll put it up for a motion and a second, and then have some conversation if we need to. So we have three items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, thank you.
For the public, would you just read what the items are?
I will. First is approval of previous meeting minutes of the city council, regular meeting, 6:00 PM, February 22nd, special meeting at 4:30 on March 3rd, and approval of the fiscal year, fiscal year '22 budget of proposed expenditures by the Charleston Visitors Bureau. Nicole.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogosian.
Aye.
Councilmember Hahn.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers. Councilmember Popsin.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is reports from standing committees. Start with Ways and Means. Amy, if you'll pop up the one-page report, that would be great. And there's a couple of copies in the back, because I know it's very hard to see. So there's some copies on the back table if you want it. These are our financial summary results through February 28th, so about almost two-thirds of the way through the year. You get, so if we apply a percentage to where we are in our fiscal year, we're at 58%. So if you can just kind of let your eye scan on the right-hand side of the revenue line, you'll see almost everything's over 58%. So from a revenue standpoint, the city's having a really good year-to-date so far. Right-hand side expenditures, again, it would be 58%. You can see everything's mostly in line there. Something, a couple of things are timing issues, but for the most part expenditures are very much in line. If you drop down to general fund revenues on the left-hand side, kind of halfway down the page, same thing. If we were right on budget, that percentage of fiscal year '22 budget would show 58%. So you can see we're in a good spot on just about every line item there. Same thing on expenditures to the right. If we were right on budget, it would be at 58% in the third column over, and we're spending very much in line with expectations for this year. So our revenue forecast, we have a couple of projects that we will move into the fiscal '23 budget that we had put up for this year, but just did not get them done for various reasons, like phase-three drainage, underground electrical lines, comprehensive, a portion of the comprehensive drainage plan and the renovation construction of public dock space at the marinas. Some of those projects will be moved into our fiscal '23 budget. The city at the end of February has about $30 million in cash deposits. About $4 million of that is unspent bond proceeds that we obtained when we were doing the dock and phase-three drainage. About $1 million is the American Rescue Plan unspent that we have received but haven't spent that yet, and about $12 million is restricted for tourism-related expenses for beach preservation. Questions on? Amy, if you'll go to capital projects, please. Say a real quick update on some of our projects. Desiree covered this in pretty good detail at our Ways and Means meeting last week, but just to give you a quick feel, Marina Restaurant, hopefully we can take this one off after this month or next month. Maybe they'll be open. The game plan is to be open by early April. Fabers are actually installed now. Hours on in the building, the floors are being finalized upstairs and in the back room. Kitchen equipment is arriving and being installed as we speak. And hopefully, they are expecting to open in early April. Amy, I think we have a couple of photos. You can see this is the entryway to the new restaurant. Looks really, really nice. They've done a really great job on, and Desiree, I know you were there yesterday. Anything to add to updates or timings or?
No, it's moving along. No, I think in terms of their opening date, we're still, they're still looking at April for an opening.
Thank you. Arena dock rehab update, again, another one that hopefully we will be able to take off here soon. Fuel dock, close to being finished, fuel hut, being finished on the inside. Rest of the restaurant face docks. Again, this project expected to be completed by April 1st or thereabouts. And you can see some of the updated pictures here of the inside of the fuel hut, as well as the outside of the new fuel hut. You haven't been down. It looks really nice. Phase-three drainage, 30th, 36th, and 41st avenues. 30th and 36th, you can see the detail there. We hope to start the 30th Avenue outfall in early April, so just a few weeks. The contracts been signed and completed. Work on the harbor golf course will happen or be completed by June. We're coordinating that closely with Wild Dunes, obviously. There'll be some roadwork done at Waterway and 30th, somewhere between July and August, and then at Waterway and 36th, when we move there between September and October. 41st Avenue, still waiting on final approval and permits for that particular project. That is a fall of next year, most likely, project construction.
Yeah, in regards to the roadwork that will be done on Waterway at 30th and 36th, I guess it's probably important to note that that may entail some heat touring time to time throughout the neighborhood, right?
That's correct.
So we don't have a lot of control over that other than that too much time, right?
That's right.
And what we can communicate.
Right.
Around the time.
Yeah.
Next one, Amy, is the comprehensive drainage master plan. A lot of good work and progress happening here. Two and 3D modeling is going on as we speak. Potential projects are being identified that we can work into our budget and start working on and on track for a completion of this project by the end of the year. Underground utility conversion, our last project is, we are finalizing, it frozen on you, Amy. It happens. Dominion Energy has received the final drawings, and again, this is at 21st and Palm is our first project that we were looking to put underground. Contractors requested land closures, working through the SC DOT. Our share of this particular project is budgeted for our fiscal '23. Real quick, in the minutes, we had a regular scheduled meeting on Tuesday, March 15th. All members were present. The treasurer went through in much more detail the financial statements. Desiree went through in much more detail the capital projects update. We just voted, had great lengthy discussion on the CVB fiscal '22 budget, just voted on that in the consent agenda. Also had consideration of approval and amount not to exceed $15,000 to hire an expert to develop a report about safety issues and modifications on the IOP connector. That failed, that motion failed. We talked about, pretty good detail here and at our budget workshop the next day, around the redevelopment of the new public docks and intercoastal docks at the marina. There'll be much more conversation around that at next month's Ways and Means meeting. We had a discussion about the celebration of the 70th anniversary of the city's incorporation. That's been referred to the Recreation Committee. We've had a conversation about should it be 70th or 75th or both for the party crowd. We'll see what the Recreation Committee winds up coming up with. And the next regular meeting of Ways and Means is Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. We also had a special meeting, a budget workshop meeting on the next day on March 16th at 1:00 PM. All members were present, along with most department heads and additional staff. We looked at, it was our first shot at the fiscal '23 budget. We reviewed our budget assumptions, discussed key budget initiatives, projects. We looked at a revenue forecast, proposed expenditures, and any other new projects or additions that council had. We looked at our budget assumptions from a revenue and expense standpoint. We were forecasting about 90% of the revenue from the previous 12 months on our tourism funds. In the police department, we're forecasting about a 95% staffing rate, which has been our actual practice the last month, year or two. Two and a half percent merit or step increase. We adjusted our fuel assumptions to $4.50. Hopefully, that'll be a good number for the full 12 months, as well as transfers between our general fund and capital projects fund. So our game plan is we'll have the second draft of the fiscal '23 budget. We'll be discussed at the April Ways and Means Committee meeting. First reading of the budget is slated for the April City Council meeting, followed by a public hearing, and second reading at the May City Council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend a rule of order to allow Mr. William Hamilton to speak under citizens comments. He came from way off the island. I imagine he got caught in traffic.
Does that happen?
I've heard.
Well, actually, it won't be me.
Well, we got a vote.
We got a vote with. So there's a motion. I'll second it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Nicole.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogosian.
Aye.
Councilmember Hahn.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Popsin.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
All in favor.
Mr. Hamilton, do you want to come to the microphone?
My friends are going to make the presentation.
All right, whoever it is, can they come to the mic?
Over here.
Please.
Just everybody get one of the knees.
I need the box shut.
Can you get closer to the mic?
A little closer to the ground. This is Ms. Louise Brown.
And I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant for years. I was a little girl. I used to come on all of the palms and follow the darling. I'm here today to represent to you all that all upon, which I think is a beautiful place, and it's on the transportation apartment, low-country transportation, with William Hamilton is the founder of this program. Representing you all today, the key to the all of them.
They had such a wonderful time. They called me tiny dancer the entire time. They went from the village of Happy Valley all the way to Mount Pleasant. All four of these guys had not touched the ocean in four years. They got fever, open loaded stage, had the visitor center downtown. They cried. They did that fair when it rained. They marvelled over what the beach looked like coming over the connector. You guys have got to do this another year. I think it's amazing, fantastic, many to bring us to people. It almost makes me want to cry to present you all of this. Thank you so very much. I remember driving a car to the beach with my kids. The bus was a much better experience. Thank you all.
That's the key to the sea. Get open to the ocean. It belongs to you.
Been looking for this. Thank you all.
And children have been ferry, more of that family, so swimming in the pool will be riding your shuttle in the number 40 to the beach.
And just so you know, we were signed up again for this year.
Yes, we were so pleased to hear that. I'll be bringing the little two-year-old from Galvestere, most magical voice I've ever heard.
The sister key to this key will be thrown into the ocean on the first day of Memorial Weekend to open the sun.
Nice.
You gotta figure out how to do that. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all for coming. Very well done. Thank you all. Thank you. Little perspective is never bad, is it?
Always good.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll continue with our standing committee reports. Public safety, Jan.
Public safety met on March 3rd. All committee members were in attendance. We welcomed our new fire chief, Craig Oliverius, who starts his job next week. And he hails from Mount Pleasant, and you may see him at the beach surfing after hours. We look forward to him joining us. I'd like to also extend a thank you to interim chief Briscoe, who kept us on track for the last seven months, and Lee's chief Oliverius with an outstanding department with a Class 1 IOS rating and fully staff. Thank you, Chief Briscoe. Police Chief Cornet. Police Chief Cornet reports that we are safer today than we were last February. We had fewer incidents. So great job with the police department and for all of us for staying safe. We have three vacancies to fill in that department and are hiring our summer beach officers. So if you know anyone, send them our way, please. We had a meeting with the Isle of Palms Connector Study, a kickoff meeting. The city met with South Carolina DOT and others to kick off Phase 1, which reevaluates the pavement markings installed last year. The study should take less than six months, and the South Carolina DOT has authorized a Phase 2 study, which will look at the entire Isle of Palms Connector, and which should improve traffic flow by re-timing signals at the end of it. This study will take a little bit longer, probably about a year. I thought we made great progress, and we've got great cooperation on those projects right now. The city is meeting with county parks to find a way to eliminate traffic backups at the park entrance because of the way they collect payments, and this is being much more difficult than we ever anticipated. But we'll keep at it. Later on in the agenda, we will address a proposed letter to SC DOT regarding restriping. Is that right, Mr. Man?
During your report.
Oh, now?
Ready?
All right, well, there was a letter that was proposed to be sent to South Carolina DOT on behalf of the Isle of Palms City Council. What else do I need to do with that?
Just read this through and let somebody motion and second it.
Read the whole letter.
Just this order in the agenda. I can do it. So there's consideration of recommendation that letter be sent to the SC DOT based on statute 57-5-820, that the city has not agreed to the changes to the connector and requests that the connector be returned to its original striping until such time as an agreed-upon change to the connector can be reached. So we need a motion?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And I just.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor, if I could add to the motion.
Sure.
That the letter would be sent by the entire council, that it would attach the March 1st, 2001 letter from Charleston County Deputy Administrator Eric Watson, and that all neighboring municipality councils, Eric Watson, Charleston County Council, and the governor's office should be copied on the letter.
In the form of a friendly amendment?
That's what I'm asking. I was watching Nicole and see if she got it.
I got it. Well, that captures.
Got it. So I say, sorry, friendly amendment. Is there a second to that?
Myers, Councilmember Myers, would you be okay with that?
Second.
Thank you.
So just Jan, real quick, additional update with our DOT. We had conversations today with our lobbyists in prep for a meeting on the 29th, so next Tuesday. We'll be in Columbia with Secretary Hall and some of our state legislators, you know, just continuing to push forward on long-term strategy, short-term strategy, holding feet to the fire on whatever studies they've committed to, which is the connector and the corridor as well. So just by way of update, you know, again, some good progress here in the last couple of weeks. Other questions, comments, thoughts?
Anyone else have a comment?
Blair. Yeah. I just wanted to state to council that while we've discussed this previously as to why the letter needs to be sent, and the reasons are outlined in the letter itself, so I'm not going to repeat those again. However, while this letter talks specifically about the connector, the implications go much deeper. This is about the right of our island to self-governance. It is about the right of home rule. In 1973, after consideration for over two decades, the leaders of our state enacted a constitutional amendment to our state constitution. Article 8 of our state constitution clearly states that the powers of the municipality shall be shall be liberally construed in favor of the municipality. And the specific mention of particular powers shall not be construed as limiting in any manner the general powers of such municipalities. The Constitution goes on to state that no laws for a specific municipality shall be enacted. S C D O T actions with our connector and our roads specifically violate not only South Carolina statute fifty-seven dash five dash eight twenty, S C D O two, S C D O T has violated the Constitution of South Carolina. This letter is the first step in standing up for the rights of the citizens of Isle Palms. A line must be drawn that this elected body will stand up for and defend the Constitution. To do otherwise relegates our Constitution to nothing more than a meaningless piece of paper. If we do not demand the Constitution be followed and enforced against all that violate its rule of law, then what is to stop the governor or our state senators from abolishing this duly-elected council and appointing their own council to dictate their will? The attack on our island and our state constitution by S C D O T and the state legislature cannot be overstated. Sending this letter along with the commitment to follow through is the first step in correcting the violation in taking of our constitutionally guaranteed rights. I urge each and every member of this council to vote to send this letter to S C D O T and to stand up for the rights of our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jan, your comment.
Yes, at this time, I don't believe that the letter is necessary. I respect your opinion, Councilman Han, and that it is, you see it as a legal matter. But I believe that S C D O T is acting in good faith now, and that is enough for me. I do not need a, to take them to court over it. The issues, the key issue is the one that S C D O T did come in and restripe the road without having any input from the city of Isle Palms. They have remedied that by starting a study that will reexamine what they did and come up with alternative improvements. We have a consultant onboard on our behalf to work with, to review S C D O T's work. They, S C D O T has their consultant to do the work as well. And I believe by making, taking that step, S C D O T has remedied their transgression from last year. So I do not see a need for this letter at this time.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. I agree with the letter itself and that what it's trying to convey. And I also agree with Councilmember Han's comments to council here tonight in regards to what the maybe, what threats and opportunities may be going forward to home rule. And we know that that has been an issue ever since we had COVID issues that fell upon us to make some tough decisions out here as well as the restriping of the connector. But I also agree that the timing is wrong for this, to send this letter. I would rather see us, we're making progress, we think we feel like we're making some good progress here. I would rather see us see that through, see what next steps are. And I know there is a meeting on the 29th that might lay that out just a little bit more clearly for us as well. So I'm not in favor of sending the letter at this point.
Katie?
Yeah, so first off, I like to, I'm hearing a lot of what sounds to me like talking about bad timing. It sounds like we're afraid that we're going to get in trouble with the state and the D O T if we do this. That bothers me a lot. I feel like freedom of speech is really important and it's specifically important for political speech. I think we should be able to say this without being afraid that we're going to get somehow punished by the S C D O T. That, that just really, that, that gets, that makes me want to do the letter even more. But the other thing is talking about the fact that they've rectified the mistake by agreeing to a study that's going to take six months to a year, if not longer, when they restrike the roads within one night, two nights. I don't, that doesn't make any sense to me. I know that the previous council did send a letter to the state explaining the fact, basically, that they were upset with this also. But I think that with a new council and now with it having been a year and nothing has been done except for one meeting to talk about doing a study that's going to take a year, I think that we are, we owe it to the citizens of Isle Palms to at least write this letter. And I really hope we, we live in a better state than one that would punish us for writing a very thoughtful, educated, heartfelt letter. It's not in any way, shape, or form rude or, you know, anything like that. So I, I would really like for us to write, to send this letter written, so to send it.
John?
I agree with the comments that have been made and equally disturbed about the violation of home rule. But if we really believe that sending this letter is going to force D O T to return the connector back to its original form as quickly as they changed it, I think is fantasy. And so the next logical step for us to push our case is a legal case. And that would be a much longer period of time to get the change that we want. Then let's try to work with them through the meeting that we have scheduled on the 29th and try to get it changed that way as opposed to a legal course of action. That to me is not going to, it never ends where you want it to end. So for that reason, I'm voting against it this evening. But always reserve our rights to, to take this course later on if we don't get where we need to.
Okay, one more time?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that I don't, I don't think that this letter is, this is not a summons and complain. It's, it's just, it's literally just telling them that we are dissatisfied. It's putting them on notice. And if, I don't think that it puts us into a, the next, you know, on deck or legal. I mean, I think that if that became a last resort, then it would be. But I also think it can be seen as a bit of a negotiation tool in our negotiating with, to continue to negotiate with them just to let the S C D O T know that this is something that we feel very strongly about and that we're not going to just sit back and let another year go by with them doing nothing. Because, I mean, if we don't do anything now and year from now, when we're sitting here in the same place, then we're in a position of, oh, now what do we do? Now we need to write a letter and put them on notice. And that's, you know, a whole year's gone by, so.
I don't think the timeframe is a year though, right? That we have, I think, end of year is the timeframe.
Correct.
So it's not a year out. It's the end of this year, which is what's eight, seven months, eight months before we get some change.
But I don't know that's accurate. Maybe I misunderstand. I'm, I'm being told that they're going to do a study, Phase One study, will take six to seven months. Then they're going to do a Phase Two study. Nothing is going to happen on that connector until 2024.
That's not a true statement.
Well, that's what it appears to me.
It's not a true statement.
Okay, well, then, then, then correct me on that. But as we sit here today, they are violating the Constitution of the state. And we have all pledged to uphold that Constitution. It's a very blatant violation. And it behooves us to take action against that.
Final comments? Nicole?
Councilmember Anderson, we're voting on whether to send the letter or not. Nay.
Councilmember Boghossian?
Nay.
Councilmember Han?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Nay.
Councilmember Streeman?
Nay.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Nay.
Motion fails.
And what else from public safety?
I think that is all of our business for today.
Next meeting.
Next meeting is, I think we're going to change it to Tuesday, April fourteenth.
Okay.
Thought the seventeenth was suggested, but once, once the meeting date has been finalized, we'll advertise it on.
Yeah, we'll advertise it.
All right, thank you. Jimmy, Public Works?
Yes, sir. Public Works Committee met four thirty Wednesday, March 2nd. And we went straight into department reports. Director Pitt said garbage collection was up a little in February. Yard debris was up by about forty tons. He spent forty-six hundred dollars on vehicle maintenance for the month and remains under budget. Assistant Director reviewed activities of Public Works Department in February. And the mayor's already talked about the drainage situation, so I won't repeat that. They're going to have a meeting with Davis and Floyd to discuss alternative methods of ditch cleaning. Work at the front beach included completion of lighting from Tenth Avenue to Pavilion and getting the bike rack and turtle statue removed at the V F W to accommodate a larger sidewalk we all know about. The repaving of Forty First Avenue sidewalk from Marina Wildwood Drive is now complete. Councilmember Han asked about parking bumpers along Palm Boulevard and the potential replacement. Administrator shared in the earlier conversations and research that option revealed that it was cost prohibitive. Old Business, we talked about updating on Phase Three drainage project. And the mayor discussed that under B, we talked about an update on improvements to golf cart path along Ocean Park Plaza. The encroachment permit has been secured. We're getting pricing. And we hope to coordinate that work with a larger project on Ocean Boulevard that will facilitate the movement of the large delivery trucks. New business discussion, I proposed twenty-three operational budget. Councilmember Boghossian suggested raising fuel prices under, well, fuel charges even higher considering what's going on with gas prices nationwide. Under B, discussion of request from the dinghy to relocate, relocate an existing compactor located at a small municipal parking lot. And Mr. Jones, as owner of the dinghy and a couple of other restaurants, spoke to the committee about it's a health hazard problem. And we're going to be looking at this further down the road. I'm really hoping we can get something done to give the restaurant some relief. The next meeting, Public Works Committee will be on Wednesday, April 2nd at three thirty P M. The meeting was adjourned five thousand thirteen.
Recreation Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and please forgive me, I'm fighting these allergies, they're killing me. So the Rec Committee met on Monday, March the seventh. All committee members and staff were present. We called the meeting to order, first order of business was the approval of the previous meeting's minutes. We went next to City's comments, however, there were none. Next, we went to the department reports. And Director Page gave her normal department report, a friendly reminder to all of our residents that the activities and events are online. But I did want to highlight a few things. Director Page said, except for a few classes where size is still limited, most class attendance is back up to pre-COVID levels, which I thought was kind of good news. And she also brought up that the rec track is online and runs smoothly, which is the online registration. We moved on to old business where we discussed, as requested by Councilwoman Myers, about staffing for Sunday. Norma Jean just reminded us that we still don't have the staff available and that she would let us know when we do and we would discuss it and bring it up at that time. Moving on to new business, we talked about the budget under the Rec Department. Director Page reviewed line items that would saw significant change from the fiscal twenty-two budget. She also reviewed some of the capital projects that we paid for with tourism revenues such as the basketball courts and certain special events. Both the budget and the capital expenditures were talked about ways and means and will continue to be talked about ways and means at full council. And the next meeting for the Rec Committee will be Monday, April 4th at twelve thirty. If there are no questions, Mr. Mayor, that ends my report.
Questions? Personnel Committee, John?
Yeah, the Personnel Committee met on Tuesday, March 8th. All committee members were present, as well as Director Carr and HR Officer Ladd. Under Old Business, the committee interviewed two candidates for the Open I O P Water and Sewer Commission vacancy, Mr. Chad Neal and Mr. Jeff Forsland. Both candidates were very well-qualified. After the interviews, the committee passed a motion to recommend the council to appoint Jeff Forsland to the open position. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jeff Forsland to the Unexpired Water and Sewer Commission vacancy.
Second.
Comments?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Boghossian?
Aye.
Councilmember Han? Councilmember Myers? Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Streeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
All right, also under Old Business, we discussed the code of conduct for members of city council. This is a little background, this item was brought up in the previous council for consideration. The Personnel Committee looked at a couple different examples and decided the code draft back, drafted back in 2017 for I O P merged with the compliance and enforcement section from the city of Charleston. It was a good first draft of the document. But prior to going any further with any edits, we thought it would be a good idea to hear council's thoughts at this time. The actual code includes mostly items that members would be bound under, under the oath we took, our state ethic regulations. But there are some other specific items, such as social media guidelines included. It, the draft is included in the packet. And so I would like to make a motion to discuss the draft code of conduct for members of city council as recommended by the Personnel Committee.
Second. John, just for clarity, is this discussion and approval or just discussion at this point?
I think discussion at this point.
Agenda says discussion and.
Discussion and approval.
Is that good, Nicole?
Yes, sir.
Jimmy?
I'd like for the committee in for full council to consider amendment, adding language, the state's conduct, code of conduct for elected officials and add language and appointed members of boards and commissions.
Second.
I believe.
Question?
I have a question. I believe we discussed not including members of boards and commissions at our, at our last meeting and decided that we would take a first step at council and then later add that if we considered it necessary.
May I ask why? Why would you do it later on? Why now? If, if we are held to a code of conduct, why should the people that we approve for these boards and commissions that we vote on be subject to the same standard?
You know, Jimmy, I'll just, I'll answer some of that because I've come to your camp very quickly on this, given some of the activities over the last month or two, since we've been discussing this and drafting it. I think I was probably one that said, let's just focus on the elected officials at the time and let's try it. Let's get it implemented. But I'm aware, I'm fully in support of what Jimmy is bringing on as an amendment to broaden it to appointed officials as well of the city.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to say Councilmember Ward beat me to the punch on this one because that was exactly the motion that I was going to make. So I fully support it. And I certainly think that we should amend this to include any committees, boards, commissions, members that have been appointed by the city council. They should, they should be held to the same standards of conduct and acting in the public interest and fully in favor of it. Third.
So we have to vote on the amendment?
I withdraw the, I withdraw the amendment.
Jimmy made the amendment.
The mayor seconded.
Nicole?
It's just the amendment.
Just the amendment at this point, adding the elected and appointed, appointed officials and advisory.
Well, he said, and appointed members of boards and commissions.
Yeah.
Just to be.
Yes. Yes.
To make sure.
Appointed members of boards and commissions is what I said.
Thank you. Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Gogian?
Aye.
Councilor Han?
Aye.
Councilor Myers?
Aye.
Councilor Popson?
Aye.
Councilor Streetman?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Now, the original motion, Nicole?
Already have mine signed, ready to turn it.
Even though it's a draft.
Was the original motion to discuss or to consider?
Both.
We clarified.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Gogian?
Aye.
Councilor Han?
Aye.
Councilor Myers?
Aye.
Councilor Popson?
Aye.
Councilor Streetman?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
All right. Under new business, Personnel Committee discussed the F Y twenty-three operational budget for government, general government and building department. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April twelfth at nine A M.
Questions for John? Thank you, John. Real Property Committee, Rusty?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a real property committee meeting, one thirty P M, Monday, March seventh. And we had all council members on the committee, President Myers, Hopp, Men Streetman, along with Director Carr from staff was along, was there with us. And we also had Kirby Marshall, A T M, there to present to us as well. We had the approval of previous meetings minutes, and we moved on to citizens' comments. There were no citizens' comments. The next order of business was Marina tenant comments, and we did have Marina tenant comments from Brian Barrigan, Ala Palm's Marina manager, and he shared with the committee a number of photos that he had taken of improvements that he had personally made at his, at his expense to the Marina, which included some fencing, parking lot grading, upgrades to the store, including painting, roofing, deck staining, installation of additional, additional golf cart spaces, installation of a new electrical transformer, which is going to be also beautified. It's going to have a, an outside scan or whatever that, that should be more aesthetically pleasing. And, and the installation of artificial turf that is going to have in that area between the bulkhead and the parking lot, too. He also, you know, highlighted how beautiful things were down there with the fuel dock and the jet docks, and, and he had a lot of compliments about that. Of course, the city funded all of that, but he thanked the city for allowing him to be a part of all of those projects as well. With Fuel Hut, he did make some improvements on that as well. So we thank him for presenting to us, and, and we moved on to one other item that he mentioned. And that was that him and Mark at one sixteen, which is the Islander Seventy-One Restaurant Group. At that time, when we had the meeting on the seventh, we're still in conversations about the shared parking area. And then it's ongoing down there, and those conversations were going pretty well. There were still some disagreements on a couple of things that they were trying to work out, and I think we'll have some favorable news coming pretty soon in regards to having that settled. So just stay tuned on that. Under old business, we had update on, on all the capital projects, and I won't say anything more about that because it's sort of been said in ways and beings, and, and tonight is a recap, under the Ways and Beings recap. And it's all online, you know, just go and look at it, and if you find anything you need to know about those projects and how well they're going and what we're still in the process of doing. We also see on the, up on the host public dock and green spaces, Ala Palm Marina, we still have some further discussion going on about that. And that, of course, is still work that's being done by Davis and Floyd. And we still are in a, you know, at the point here where we're getting, we've had conceptual drawings out there. We've given a lot of input. That's going back, and they're working on those areas there. Update on ADA beach access improvements. We're still waiting, as far as I know, for a response from O C R M for permit to extend the motor map further on the four beach access path. Public comment period is over. It was finished as of a week or so ago. And Douglas had spoken with O C R M that particular morning. They indicated they still need a couple more weeks. I think we're still pretty much in that timeframe.
Right.
And I see head nodding out there, which means if we don't have an answer at this point, we expect one soon.
Correct.
Okay. We also had a discussion of evaluating alternatives for development of the municipal parking lots, which we had quite a bit of discussion about that. Director Carr led that discussion, also explaining the city code does not allow for a new hotel in that area. A retail operation office space, multi-use restaurant would be permitted, but no one has previously expressed interest in those options. So we had quite a bit of conversation about that, and we decided that we would ask Director Carr to take this back to the planning commission, let them look at the idea, and maybe come back to real property at a later date with some recommendations they may have. Under new business, we had presentation discussion of condition assessment report of the A I W W public dock. Of course, that's the two docks down there adjacent to the restaurant and the former water sports dock. And Kirby Marshall made a presentation on that on condition of those docks. We talked quite a bit about that and what the cost might be in those particular docks to, to redo them. And we looked at the regulatory status for each dock. We had looked at the estimated cost to refurbish and rehabilitate, rehabilitate the two docks. We had a lot of discussion at Ways and last week, and I'll leave it at that, and that we came to a point where we have some next steps that we'll look at in, in regards to options for those two docks. We had discussion, consideration, propose options for redevelopment of the new green space at the Marina. And again, Davis and Floyd is creating some options for that area there, and we'll see more in regards to landscaping and seating options and connecting parkways. We also covered the proposed F Y twenty-three operational budget for the Marina and Front Beach area and provided some input on that. Our last item of regular business was discussion of the seventieth anniversary of the city's incorporation. We talked about that a little earlier in Ways and Beans recap. But I brought it up, and I'd ask if there's any interest in celebrating the seventieth anniversary of the city incorporation, which will be early next year, will be seventy years old at that point in terms of incorporation. The council member did agree, and we also agreed it would be a good idea to go and take it for further discussion. And we added it to the Ways and Beans Committee agenda, and we did have some discussion on that. Decision was made to send that to the Recreation Committee for them to take a look at. And last, last item here, miscellaneous business, the next meeting of the Real Property Committee will be held on Monday, April the fourth at one thirty P M. So unless there's questions, Mr. Mayor, that ends my report.
Questions? Thank you, Rusty. I have five reports from city officers, boards and commissions, Board of Zoning Appeals, no meeting in March. Planning Commission minutes are attached. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, yes, sir, sorry.
What's the next meeting?
For?
Accommodation Tax.
I don't know that their chair is called one.
Yeah, well, we received this week two applications for funding, so we're, we're working on trying to schedule something for April thirteenth, which is their typical schedule.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, contrary to popular belief, I do not set that one. That's good. Environment, Environmental Advisory Committee minutes are attached. John, I didn't ask you to go in anything to update from the environmental crowd.
No, I, I believe there's a, a recommendation to join Keep America Beautiful campaign out there, and they're working through the details of that, that you should be hearing something about soon. Other than that, I, we have some follow-ups from our last meeting and probably bring something to council, not, not too distant future on climate change. But other than that, that's, that's about it.
Great, thank you. Next is reports from special or joint committees. Russ, you want to update us on what's going on with the ATAX Task Force?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I had asked this be included. I know we didn't have it on the regular agenda, but it is a special committee with a special assignment. So what I'd like to do is just bring the public up to date at this point. The ATAX Task Force was appointed by council unanimously at the February twenty-second city council. We have nine members representing business interests on the island or, or residents of the island. We have hotels and lodging included, members, including Wild Dunes Resort. Short-term rentals are represented. Rental management companies are represented. Food and beverage is represented. A resident owning rental properties is represented. One Ala Palm's resident with no rental property is, is a member. Our Chair of the ATAX Advisory Committee, Ray Burns, is on the panel. And also the President of the newly formed Ala Palm Chamber of Commerce, Katrina Limbaugh. And also, I'm there as the appointed representative from council to really not only chair the committee but facilitate the committee. That's my role, I think. The purpose of the task force is to research, evaluate, develop a go-forward business model with specific recommendations for the expenditure of accommodations tax revenue specific to the thirty percent that is to be used exclusively for tourism advertisement and promotion to develop and increase tourist attendance through the generation of publicists. Our challenge and charter is to complete our work and make recommendations to council no later than six months from when the committee was, its inception, late February. We believe that we can deliver our recommendations significantly prior to that timeframe. But we're not going to rush through it. We're going to do our research, investigation, and develop the recommendations, and it'll take us where it takes us. But we do think that we have a group that can deliver sooner than the six months. We've had two meetings so far, February the twenty-fourth, two days after we were formed, and March seventeenth, and that was a meeting we did have to change because we couldn't have the C V B, which had been asked for with the task force to represent. So we did change that one. And we have another meeting scheduled for next Thursday, March thirty-first. Our first meeting was comprised of self-introductions of each task force member. We had a thorough comprehensive review of our purpose and explanation of the state accommodations tax and how it's generated and distributed to the municipalities. Also, how it can be spent. We went through a lot of that material as well. Then we had what I consider a really good Q and A session amongst the task force members, which I would encourage the public to, to look at if they so choose. Our second meeting was a presentation by our D M O, which is the Charleston's Visitors Bureau. The presentation was led by the C V B C E O, Helen Hill. Afterwards, a Q and A session with the C V B and Helen was conducted as well. Again, I would encourage the public to look at that as well. Then the panel had a discussion, without Helen Hill being involved in this, of course, about what additional data, research or information is needed by the task force, and we agreed we need to hear a presentation from Bali Beach who formed their own D M O some years ago. And there may be other data and research we pursue is needed going forward that's still open ended. You know, we're looking at pretty much everything that we can in this process. We have a good engaged group on this task force, and we will continue to do our work to provide solid, specific recommendations to council for consideration in the future. There's a lot of ATAX dollars being generated by the tourists and visitors to this beautiful area we call home. And we want to make sure we continue to maximize ATAX dollars without negatively affecting our residential community and our residents. So that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Questions? Rusty? Arena, perfect timing. I'm seven as petitions. Petitions received, referred or disposed of, none. Bills are already in possession of council, none. Got a guest joining us for this next item, introduction of new bills, resolutions and proclamations. We have proclamation twenty-two dash oh-one to proclaim March twenty-second as Red Cross Month.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We've got the board chair of the local chapter of the Red Cross with us. We'll read the proclamation in a moment. Katerine, anything you'd like to address us with?
I just came from the Charleston City Council meeting. They were running very late.
Yeah, we don't do that here.
No, I can tell, but you said this meeting was going to be over by six thirty. Because I told him I live on Sullivan's Island, so he didn't want me to come, right? Actually, the proclamation before the Red Cross one there was about Holocaust. And there was a lot of Jewish city members who were actually there speaking, so it's quite moving, which led me to actually start my remarks about Ukraine. We get a lot of question in the Red Cross about Ukraine. Why aren't we making statements, et cetera? One of the reasons why Red Cross has been so successful in supporting both people and military throughout decades and during wars is because it's a non-political organization. The minute you go political, all bets are off and you aren't protected. So right now, as we speak, people in Ukraine are facing, some of them the dilemma, should they leave their home to keep their family safe and flee in to Russia? That's an example. Those are close to the border. For them, it's safe to actually go into Russia. Can you imagine that dilemma? But the Red Cross is on both sides to help those who have to leave everything. It's a good intro. First, I want to thank you for making the proclamation, and on behalf of the Red Cross, I accept it. We do a lot of things, and I think most of us here are privileged to be on the giving end rather than the receiving end. Just a few facts. We run a lot of blood drives, as I'm sure you know. Almost four thousand last year, and we collected eighty thousand units. What's so special with a Red Cross blood drive? It's that money we get from selling. It goes back into disaster relief and support. It's not-for-profit. We do support a lot of military and their families and the veterans, about fourteen hundred last year. We directly helped twelve hundred people in the Low Country and three hundred and sixty disasters were responded to. That's a non-evacuation year. When we evacuate, we have people in shelters for a really long time. So last year and the previous year and now, and jinxing it, we've been blessed not having any evacuations, but we still have a lot of disaster, like the fire in West Ash, as an example. So we also, some of this money that goes to direct financial aids, so about a quarter million was paid out in various financial aid and support last year. Any questions or comments? I would love to have us have a stronger bond with you guys and run some blood drives here. So if anyone is interested in hosting a blood drive at their company, maybe here or anywhere else, feel free to contact us. Mayor has my contact details. We run blood drives on a lot of companies like Blackboard, that is very close to us here, Ball, Boeing. Everyone's running blood drives and some city halls. This is a nice facility in here. It's super clean and pretty. This is very pretty and it's very beachy.
You should have seen it a couple of months ago.
I know, but it looks good. It looks good. And I have to say, you're much faster than my own island, Sullivan's, to accept this proclamation, so you're in the lead right now. I know how important that is.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Questions or comments, Jimmy?
Yeah. Regarding Ukraine, you know, everybody's heart goes out to them. One citizen sent us a, a letter, an email suggesting that maybe we fly the Ukrainian flag from City Hall or maybe the top of the connector for a time, and I would like the city, see the city consider that to show solidarity. And I don't know if it's appropriate to mention at this time. If, if so, I'd like to make that as a motion.
My second.
So you know, the Charleston City Hall is flying you. It's very kind of good for life. I just walked under a few minutes ago. So I think it's very appropriate. It's about my favorite for this meeting, but, and it's not a Red Cross thing, but I think it's a great suggestion.
Right. Well, I appreciate you bringing it up so I can make the motion.
You know, the check goes to Middle Street, you know.
Right, yes, ma'am.
We had, so we have a motion and a second. Desiree and I've had a little bit of conversation, Jimmy, to your point about the email we got from a resident, you know, about where to fly it. It was it here at City Hall? Do we do it at the connector?
Connector is pretty cool.
I know.
I'm meddling in now, but you know, when the.
You kind of are, but that's okay.
Yeah, it's in my nature. I'm sorry.
She gets her way a lot.
But you know, when the wind touches the connector and you go over it from either side, either way the wind blows, it's going to look pretty good there.
But you know, when the wind touches the connector and you go over it from either side, either way the wind blows, it's going to look pretty good there.
She's amending the motion, I believe.
Did your motion include where?
Let's leave that to the
I was, I deferred that to the mayor and Desiree specifically. Although, our newest council member seems to think
Checking her driver's license. So we've got
The only council member from Sullivan's Island.
So let's do, that's okay. Let's do this motion first, and we'll come back to the proclamation. So this motion is about putting a plan in place to fly the Ukraine flag somewhere.
Councilor Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Bogosian.
Aye.
Councilor Han. Councilor Myers. Councilor Popsen.
Aye.
Councilor Streeman.
Aye.
Councilman Reward.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
I have not used my gavel yet, but it's happening.
Can we invite her to every meeting?
Call me cruelly.
I have a question about the
Proclamation, yeah.
Does anything go along with it? I mean, you're mentioning a blood drive.
Yeah, so typically the proclamation, this is a very ancient tradition, and I, and now I should know my history, but maybe Benjamin Franklin or someone started it, and so it goes out from the president every year. And then the city, sorry, the state starts it. So Henry McMaster, the governor, makes it, and then each city gets the chance to make your proclamation. It's basically a memorandum of understanding that is not tying to anything specific, so it's not going to cost you anything or stuff like that. But it's a way of saying, we acknowledge the Red Cross as a partner, and we support their cause. You know, they tread on our island, generally, sometimes, things like that, so. But if you want to be more involved, just let me know, because there are very easy way to do that, like a blood drive. And we come in and we don't disrupt too much, and we set up tables and things. We have the blood drive right here, and you know, you can put it, you have to have something to put in a little magazine that we share, right? A little newspaper. It's pretty cool.
Yeah. Katie, is it?
It does, it does make sense, and I understand now, and I feel like we should do something else.
Other questions, comments? Nicole?
Councilor Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Bogosian. Councilor Han. Councilor Myers. Councilor Popsen.
Aye.
Councilor Streeman.
Aye.
Councilman Reward.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
All in favor?
Katerina, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For coming tonight.
Thank you for welcoming.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
We'll follow up. We're here every last Thursday. Thank you. Next item is miscellaneous business, consideration of application for surf instruction permit for twenty-two Carolina Salt LLC.
A motion to approve, please.
Second, thank you. And this is our last one, third last one from last year, that's also reapplying for this year, if I remember correctly. Questions, comments?
Does administration support the application?
Well, all we do is verify that they comply with the requirements. They've submitted all paperwork, so they meet the code requirements and just have to the city to approve.
Nicole?
Councilor Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Bogosian. Councilor Han. Councilor Myers. Councilor Popsen.
Aye.
Councilor Streeman.
Aye.
Councilman Reward.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Item ten B, continued discussion of strategies to increase efficiencies of council and governance. You recall, this conversation started at our retreat in January. And again, at last month's council meeting, we discussed how to make council and staff more efficient and for us to be perceived as an effective group. An idea was to further discuss the committee structure and explore the idea of using workshops like many other municipalities do. We decided last month you wanted to see more detail around agenda, concept, flow, kind of how it would work. So we decided to do that. We brought back decent length document, I think, for your review this time. Contrary to some opinions, this is not an agenda topic that was code for anything else. This was not buried under an agenda item at all. That's just not how we do agendas. It's not anything, anywhere about transparency about how we pull this off. So we are in your packet. You have sample agendas of a workshop, and again, this is, this is a discussion item. We're not deciding anything again tonight. We're not voting on anything tonight. We are continuing this conversation we started in January. So this is three months into it. It'll be at least four months, probably five months before we get to a pass with plenty of time to react to it. So you have in your packet, sample agendas. You have an FAQ, hopefully hitting most of the things that might have been in your mind or on your mind as you read through everything, and sample pre and post calendars with the committee structure versus a workshop structure. We discussed how much time it takes for our staff to prep and follow up and attend these meetings. A good example is, we brought up Kirby Marshall from ATM, came to the real property meeting, came to the Ways and Means meeting, probably going to come back to another meeting. It'd be nice to update all council members on something this big and many other items that we have out there. It'd be nice to update everybody at one time as opposed to having three different update points, typically at the committee level, at the Ways and Means level, and then again at the council level. So again, it's just about looking at something that could be efficient. So I'll stop there and just ask for reactions, comments, need more detail, need different detail, need... Again, we're not voting on anything tonight. We're just continuing the conversation. So let me just finish that thought real quick. So if we have general head nods around the table, we'll continue to flesh out the details. We, you see the dashboard is one of the first things we've got listed there. We need to develop that dashboard on overview of city operations. We would have our city attorney give us some guidance on how we would implement this without changing a city ordinance, which is where our committee structure is memorialized. And what I'm suggesting is, if we go down this path and there's general agreement, that we would try it for the balance of twenty-two just to see if it works and see if we do observe the efficiencies that, you know, look like there could be there on paper, but in reality, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. So again, so I'll stop there and let questions or comments or thoughts. Rusty?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I read through this a number of times, and I think that we definitely, definitely ought to consider going down the road to go into a workshop-type setting. There, again, there are many, many municipalities in the state that do that. In fact, over eighty percent of what we understand, that have this type of, this type of setup. What, what happens many times is that we have our council here. Not all of us can attend every committee meeting. Not all of us can go back and look at every committee meeting. And sometimes when you get into Ways and Means or even City Council, you still don't have all the information you need to have because you haven't gotten that insight like you would have if you were there as a group. I think the workshop-type vehicle can be good for us because we would have all of us in workshop setting pretty much informally discussing all the major strategic issues that's going on within the city. We talk about blue sky. We're not talking about looking at the blue sky. We're talking about the type of issues, strategies that a city council should be looking at. We're not looking at the day-to-day detail of how the rec center is running today, how public works, trash is being picked up today in terms of the volume. That's all going to be there in the record. You, you will have that. We'll have department head reports that touch on those kind of things, but we all will be hearing it at the same time. I think this is very worthy of something that, as we go forward and flesh it out, that we consider doing for the remainder of the year, just to see how effective it can be for us.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'd just like to kind of add to that. In my limited time here, I've already experienced two times where it, I think it was detrimental that the rest of the council wasn't in a meeting. One was an executive session, and there were only three of us in there. And another was that meeting, the first meeting that we had about the docs. I mean, we, we got so much information. I feel like I know everything you could ever dream of doing at those docs, but I think everyone should. And I just think that that's, that would be such a better thing if everybody got to experience it at the same time. And then, and like, Councilwoman Anderson asked a question at the meetings last week, that it would have been nice if that question had been asked the first meeting with the, about the docs. So that, and then one thing about the communication, I definitely agree with the public comment, and I've been noticing, I didn't fully understand how this worked, but I think I see these public comments come in through my email and I read them. I, I think there, maybe we could have a system where those, the public comments that come into email were read at our meetings. I think that would, you know, and then maybe we discussed, I don't know. So anyway, that was my thought, and then potentially having an extra time for public comment, like I mentioned. I think you're talking longer than three minutes, is that?
Longer than thirty minutes.
Well, okay, the three minutes per person.
Would stick.
But, but okay, so I'm, I was thinking maybe like, maybe even a meeting that if, if there was, you know, a lot of people had said that they wanted to comment on something, that we could have a meeting specifically for a public comment. But I think those are things that can be totally easily hashed out once we start trying some of those work.
Kevin?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, as I mentioned last time we brought this up, I just don't understand why we want to change things that we've been doing for over sixty years. The committee level works. If we're looking for efficiencies, why don't we try to find them at the committee, committee level, like I mentioned last time? So I just don't understand why we're, why we're changing things. Thank you.
Okay.
In my short time here, I've noticed that a lot of times what is said in committee is repeated at the Ways and Means committee meeting. So maybe not all of us are wasting all of our time, but one of the two meetings I go to may not be necessary already. So if we can do a workshop level, and we would still, I think, have special meetings, especially for big projects, or something else that we could pull out from that. But that the workshop would certainly be a better use of our time, I think, for the reason that Katie mentioned, that we all get the in-depth presentation when it's needed, but we also don't waste our time going through things, the exact same information twice in a month.
John?
Yeah, just, and, and some of this may be repeat, but change is difficult. And I'm not a proponent of change for change's sake. I think there has to be some driving force to initiate change. But I do feel like we do have somewhat of a broken process here that needs to be looked at for the reasons that a lot of the fellow council members have stated. One is to be fully updated. A council member, and for that matter, a citizen, would need to watch every single committee meeting, every single commission meeting that occurs during the month to be up to date. And just like Councilmember Myers has stated, you know, there's times where I really don't know what's going on in another, in another committee. I watch it, but I don't have the opportunity to ask the questions and dig, dig deeper. I think the other thing is, by code, council's role is policy-setting. And it's the staff's role to carry through the policy. And I think too many times, council is into the minutia. And while we're into the minutia, we've let our home rules slip away, we've let jeopardize parking in our residential streets. We've got the big items slipping away while we're in minutia. And I think this takes us up a level into the policymaking kind of discussions that is our role. I don't think that anything we do or trial period would be permanent, and I do think as we heard tonight in public comments, it's important to make sure we have citizens' access, and we should look at ways to do that. And I do think whatever we start with doesn't mean that we finish, and we'll continue to modify to get it right. And that's why there's a set period without changing the, the code to allow us to get, get it right over a six or seven-month period. So I am in favor of continuing these discussions.
Jimmy?
How long would, would like a workshop last as far as, an individual workshop, as far as time?
Yep. Is that rhetorical?
No, I want to know, I want to know, when I signed up to do this, one of my main concerns was how much time's involved, because like, there's a lot of people, they're retired. They may have other activities, but they've got more time, and I have to measure my time commitment to, for every single thing that I do. It, it seems like to me that if we have a workshop, we have potential for right now, eight, soon to be nine, different opinions on every single topic. And I'm just, has anybody, can anybody give me an answer? Will it last three hours? Will it last all day? Because during tax season, I don't have a day. I don't have a day. I mean, I'm talking seven days a week. I work every single day. I produce on the weekends and have meetings all week. So can anybody tell me how long this would last?
So putting together the proposed agenda and conversations with Desiree and mainly to John's comment about raising this thing up a level and getting it to a policy decision-making, you know, my hope is this working session is a two- to three-hour session. And again, we're all spending that amount of time or more in committee meetings today. So, you know, until we have one, Jimmy, I don't know the answer to that, but, but based on the agenda that we've put together, the level of detail that I would like to keep it at, I think you're talking about a two- to three-hour meeting, best guess.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm not finished, but you talk about amending the code, suspending the code just to see how this will work. To me, that's going out on like a lark, so, because somebody had this idea. Amending the code or suspending, suspending the code to me is an emergency situation, not just a new idea. The way this thing was put on the agenda, it's, everybody was shaking their heads. All my friends were, what are they talking about? There is a perception among people that I know that we're going too fast, and that's all I have to say about it. Katie?
I was just going to say, that's why it's temporary, and, and I think if, if we try this for a month and the meeting takes ten hours, then, then we scrap it, right? I mean, that, that's, that's the beauty of the way that we're looking at this this time.
And I think, you know, again, we'll have our city attorney give us opinion, not tonight, but when we get further down the road, if we have head nods of how we do it, Jimmy, that was my idea. Could we just suspend it? I do not disagree with you at all. That's typically used for an emergency situation. There may be other ways allowable to make that happen without using that type of scenario.
Yeah, a couple of other things to reinforce. This would always be live-streamed, it'd always be open to the public. The meeting. The appointed citizen advisory boards and commissions would now have in place, ATAC, border zoning, planning, environmental advisory, all of those remain in place just as they are, correct?
Correct.
So, Mr. Mayor, is this just a discussion?
It's just a discussion, not, not a vote. Jan?
I was going to say too, that we could probably manage the meeting for, at two hours. We started either five or six, we're out before nine. With any item that's
Four, three to four.
Well.
She's summoning up.
I'm watching.
I'll bring you to it. But the other thing is, we can also carefully, if there is an item that we know is going to take a long time, for instance, the Marina construction project, then we might schedule that as a special separate meeting. That would, that would keep that workshop agenda. And we might want to consider still having committee members who would just pick presentations at the meeting. And if we had the separate workshop, would be the ones responsible for the separate meeting for that.
Lot of details, for sure. Could be worked out.
Well, it's good to talk about it.
So I think trying to read the room here a little bit, we will have conversations. I'll have conversation with Desiree, and we'll have conversation with city attorney to see, okay, next step. If we wanted to go down this path, what does that look like? We'll continue to flesh out an agenda to get a better time, time commitment feel. But again, I'm, I'm holding hard and fast to, it's a two- to three-hour meeting, and we keep things moving and we keep it at a level that city council needs to be focused on.
Maybe we should have a workshop to discuss the workshop.
Well, you know what?
Yeah.
I was actually going to, is it? I'm actually just thinking, is there a way to do, to basically put every meeting together once? Oh. And
Let me work on the agenda.
Call it, but no, but without making any changes, anything.
Just schedule all for the same day.
Schedule all the meetings for the same, same time?
Let us go away and work out some more detail. I mean, to, to Jimmy's comment, I mean, I've had a couple of resident conversations that came during office hours, and you know, Tuesdays aren't great. Norma Jean, you know, it is busy at the rec center on Tuesday evenings. Maybe not the best time to have a meeting. It was nighttime the best time. It's morning It was nighttime the best time, it's morning the best time. Could we rotate it just to give people opportunities to show up and be in attendance? Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I mean, this was a resident or two comment that, again, came during office hours, and I thought it was great conversation and good, good dialogue. So again, these are all things to be worked out, because we do want to give residents, you know, the, the most opportunity. Some people obviously still work, so nine in the morning doesn't work, but it might sometime. Some council members obviously still work and travel, so, you know, that may not work at all. It may always need to be at night. So why don't you let us go away and continue to flesh out details based on your feedback tonight, work with the city attorney to get to a spot and bring it back next month for continued discussion. Is that fair? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So obviously, the April committee meetings will stand
Thank you.
For now.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Next item, our next meeting is regular meeting, the six P M, Tuesday, April twenty-sixth. You know, for the business, I make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two to receive legal advice related to a proposed civil settlement from Jonathan Gandolfo relating to the tree cutting case. Council may take action on matters discussed in executive session upon returning from executive session. Thank you all for coming tonight.
We need to vote. You were on board.